For that. Thank you. Good evening and welcome. This is a regular meeting of the Princeton Planning Board on April 21st, 2022. Pursuant to Section 13 of the Open Public Meetings Act, adequate notice of the time and place of this meeting has been given by prominently posting the amended resolution of regularly scheduled meetings of the Planning Board of Princeton for February 2022 through January 2023. A copy was filed with the Clerk of Princeton on January 7th, 2022. Legal notice on the adoption of said resolution was published in the January 14, 2022 edition of the Princeton Packet. Notice of this meeting also has been posted to the municipal website, princetonnj.gov/calender. Pursuant to Executive Order 107, due to the ongoing state of emergency in New Jersey regarding COVID-19, notice that during the declared state of emergency, all regular and special meetings of the Princeton Planning Board will be held electronically via Zoom, was transmitted to the Princeton Packet, Town Topics, and The Times, and was filed with the Clerk of Princeton on April 8th, 2020, and again on January 6th, 2020. Please note, this meeting is being recorded. During hearings on applications for development, members of the public will have an opportunity to comment and ask questions. Public comment is heard by the board after an applicant's representatives have finished their presentations and have been questioned by Planning Board members and staff. Those wishing to comment orally should virtually raise your hand by clicking the little hand icon at the bottom of your screen, or if participating by phone, by pressing star nine. Oral comments will be taken in the order in which hands were raised. We ask with respect that members of the public express your views in three minutes plus inappropriate public comment containing obscenity, hate speech, or relating to matters not before the board will be muted. Carrie, will you call the roll, please?
Just so you're aware, there was a problem with the speaker. I don't know if it was yours, but it was very scratchy.
Oh, I'm sorry.
No.
Is that problem ongoing?
No, that's better now.
Okay.
Okay.
It might have been because I was, it might have been because I was holding a piece of paper close to my computer and maybe it was scratching on a... Anyway, I apologize.
No, thank you. Thank you. Ms. Capizoli?
I'm here.
Mr. Chow. Mr. Cohen?
Here.
Mr. McGowan?
I'm here.
Mr. O'Donnell?
Here.
Mr. Quinn?
Here.
Ms. Sax? Mr. Tex Arney?
Here.
Mr. Taylor? Mr. Taylor? You're muted.
Now, okay?
Thank you.
Sorry. I am here.
Mr. Bodigheimer? Mrs. Wilson?
Here.
We have a quorum.
Thank you. Announcements? Are there announcements from staff or board members? I know we have a couple of committee meetings coming up. The Landscape Committee meets at 9:00 AM on Friday, the 29th. And I, I think we're in the process of attempting to schedule a master plan committee for that same day, but the day, the, the time has not yet been nailed. And I also wanted to point out, probably most Planning Board members got an invitation to the Princeton Future Forum coming up on the 30th, I believe. The topic of which is to hear views about sites around town that are, where, where change is desirable, is the way that was put. And so I wanted to ask Jerry to advise the board on the appropriateness of our attending or not that forum, just so, just so we're clear on on that. Jerry?
Yep. Yeah, I do not think it would be appropriate for the board members to attend, as opposed to the last session of Princeton Future where we, discussion of planning principles. Here, they're talking about specific sites, which we will be reviewing in a very formal context of open public meetings before the master plan committee, and then a formal hearing before the Planning Board. And I think it's in that context that the board should be discussing the sites. And to engage in maybe in discussions, or at least hear comments by members of the public outside of that context, I think really undercuts to some extent the formality of the process and the requirements that, that it's really what was heard during that process that should govern what the board is doing. So I don't think it's a good idea for board members to be there.
Yeah, okay. Any, any questions or any other announcements?
Mr. Bodigheimer is, is present now.
Oh, good. Yeah, thanks, Carrie.
I am. Although I'll quickly be disappearing for the university item.
Ah, the, that's, that is a resolution, Nat. That is not a hearing. So it's just a findings of fact, so it's a vote on the resolution, so you don't need to disappear, you can just abstain. I think that's correct, right?
He wasn't present, so he does not even need to obtain.
Okay.
Only those who were present and voted will be called upon.
Yeah, okay. If there are no other announcements, we'll go on to the minutes. I'm not seeing anybody's hands up or anything. Okay. Well, we have lots of minutes. We had to cancel two meetings because of noticing issues. And so Carrie has been working diligently to catch up on minutes. Carrie, since we have eight sets of minutes to consider, will you, are you in a position to let us know when the minutes are moved and seconded? Who is eligible to vote?
I certainly am.
Okay. Then, then let's start with April 22nd, 2021. That was a special meeting. There any comments or suggested edits? And if not, would someone move those minutes?
I'll read who is eligible to vote.
Oh, thank you.
Ms. Capizoli, Mr. Cohen, Mr. McGowan, Mr. O'Donnell, Mr. Quinn, Mr. Tex Arney, and yourself, Mrs. Wilson.
Okay, thank you.
I'll move the minutes.
Moved by Mr. Cohen, seconded by Mr. McGowan. All in favor, please say aye.
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 Any opposed or abstaining? Okay, thanks. Next, we have the regular meeting from May 6th, 2021. Who's eligible, Carrie?
Ms. Capizoli, Mr. McGowan, Mr. O'Donnell, Mr. Quinn, Mr. Tex Arney, Mrs. Wilson.
Okay.
I will move approval.
I'll second.
By Mr. Quinn, seconded by Mr. O'Donnell. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed or abstaining? Okay, thank you. The next set of minutes is from May 20th, 2021. This was a regular meeting. Who's eligible, Carrie?
Mr. Cohen, Mr. McGowan, Mr. O'Donnell, Mr. Quinn, Mr. Tex Arney, Mrs. Wilson.
Great. I'll move approval.
Moved by Mr. Quinn, seconded by Mr. Cohen. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed or abstaining? Okay. Next, we have the minutes of June 3rd, 21. This was a regular meeting. Who's eligible, Carrie?
Mr. Cohen, Mr. McGowan, Mr. O'Donnell, Mr. Quinn, Mr. Tex Arney, Mrs. Wilson.
Okay.
I'll move them.
I'll second.
By Mr. Cohen, seconded by Mr. O'Donnell. Thank you. All in favor, please say aye.
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 Opposed or abstaining? Okay. Next up are the minutes from the June 17th regular meeting. Who was there, Carrie?
Ms. Capizoli, Mr. McGowan, Mr. O'Donnell, Mr. Quinn, Mr. Tex Arney, Mrs. Wilson.
Thank you.
I move approval.
Thank you, Julie. Moved by Ms. Capizoli, seconded by
I'll second.
Mr. McGowan. Thank you. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed or abstaining? Okay. Next, the regular meeting of July 1st, 2021. Who was there, Carrie?
Ms. Capizoli, Mr. Cohen, Mr. McGowan, Mr. O'Donnell, Mr. Quinn, Mr. Tex Arney, Mrs. Wilson.
Thank you. Minutes are moved by Mr. O'Donnell, seconded by Mr. Quinn. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Aye.
Any opposed or abstaining? Okay, thank you. Next, we have the minutes from a special meeting of July 8th, 2021. Carrie, who was there?
Ms. Capizoli, Mr. Cohen, Mr. McGowan, Mr. O'Donnell, Mr. Quinn, Mr. Tex Arney, Mrs. Wilson.
Thank you.
Almost does.
Moved by Ms. Capizoli, seconded by Mr. Tex Arney. Thank you. All in favor, please say aye.
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 Any opposed or abstaining? Okay. And finally, we have the minutes from July 29th, 2021. This was a regular meeting. Who was there, Carrie?
Ms. Capizoli, Mr. Cohen, Mr. McGowan, Mr. O'Donnell, and yourself, Mrs. Wilson.
Thank you. Those minutes are moved by Mr. Cohen, seconded by Mr. O'Donnell. Thank you. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed or abstaining? Great. Next up, we have the findings of fact. This matter is from the trustees of Princeton University, preliminary and final major site plan regarding Dillon Gymnasium. This was at Elm Drive, Block 45.01, Lot 101, file number P2121-090P. Any questions or suggested edits? And if not, would some, no commentary from Mr. Mueller or or staff?
It was a pretty easy commentary. Like, I think it's, it's explanatory territory. As you indicated, it's preliminary and final major site plan approval. There were two variances for two monument signs which weren't permitted. And otherwise, the the resolution obviously went through all the, the site plan standards set forth in Section 10B226, found they were all either satisfied or didn't apply. And there were some conditions that were imposed, although not a huge number.
Would someone like to move this resolution? Moved by Mr. Cohen, seconded. I'm sorry, Julie, I was looking at the wrong. Moved by Mr. Cohen, seconded by Ms. Capizoli. Carrie, would you call the roll, please?
Yes, Ms. Capizoli?
Yes.
Mr. Cohen?
Yes.
Mr. McGowan?
Yes.
Mr. O'Donnell?
Yes.
Mr. Quinn?
Yes.
Mr. Tex Arney?
Yes.
Mrs. Wilson?
Yes.
Mrs. Carrie?
Thank you. So next up, we have a few discussion items, although the, the second one is really more of a status report for me than a discussion. But let's start with CRX Associates. Michael, can you set the table?
Yes, Chair, thank you. At our last officers' meeting, I reported out to the officers that staff has received an application from this applicant. It's an applicant for its site plan proposal to build a new three-story mixed-use building at 70-74 Witherspoon Street. That is the site that currently has two well-known businesses, Terramomo Bread Company and a little Taste of Cuba, the cigar store. If you recall, this is directly across from the Princeton Public Library and near the corner of Paul Robeson and Witherspoon. Concern, we had actually, staff had had several conversations over the last several months with the applicant. And when we first heard this concept of raising the building and replacing it with a new three-story building, we were very concerned. It's a very beautiful building. It's a very old building. It's a building that's on one of our most historic streets, Witherspoon, and it happens to be right between two historic districts, the Central Historic District and the Witherspoon-Jackson Historic District. So for a multitude of reasons, not the least of which is that it's a beautiful building and really adds to the streetscape, we were, we were urging the applicant to consider incorporating the existing building or elements of it into the new project. And as it stands right now, the proposal is to replace the building with new construction. So I'll let the officers speak for themselves, but the officers agreed that that was of some concern, and we thought that it would be advisable to have the Historic Preservation Commission review this proposal in an advisory capacity. So that's what we're discussing this evening.
Thank you for that. I just want to clarify for anybody who might wonder that when you say raising the building, that's raise with a Z, not raise with a A.I.S.
The proposal is to demolish the, the existing structure.
That's right. No, no laughing matter. But I, I did want to just make sure everybody understood that. So, Mr. Bodigheimer?
I was curious, what is, what was on the library site before it was a parking lot? And before, what was it before it was a parking lot? What is the history of what was there?
Well, the, the Princeton Public Library that we currently have, there was an earlier building that dated from, I believe, the 1950s, which was the public library. And then before that, it was a public service electric and gas fuel yard, and there were multiple industrial buildings associated with public services operations.
Has it, has it always been a utility function, or was that also at some point? Did it also have what we would now consider historic properties if they weren't there any longer?
You're talking about the library site?
Yeah. Or, or, I'm just asking whether there were buildings.
Yeah, I'm not familiar with that site. I, just so you're clear, this is about across the street from the library.
I understand.
Okay.
I'm, I'm asking for historical context because I'm, there is a, a new tremendous asset to our downtown in a place that assuredly was not always that. And it might have been, it may have replaced a surface lot or some other use, but that lot almost certainly took down something that was historic prior, so.
Why don't I bring in our Historic Preservation Officer, Elizabeth Kim, because she's much more familiar with the street and the streetscape and how the Witherspoon Street evolved than I am. So if you'd like to hear from Elizabeth, she's, she's with us tonight.
Yeah, that's great. And thanks, Elizabeth. I first want to recognize Mr. Cohen, who had his hand up as well.
Yeah, thanks, Chair. I actually wanted Jerry to weigh in here on what authority we have as a board to require an applicant to go for a courtesy review. I know that in practice, that's a regular thing in a proposed historic district. I don't believe that this site is a, is even a proposed extension of the CBD or anything of that nature, but I, I just want you to sort of give us some legal coverage, Eric, if, if we're gonna act on this.
Well, that's, that's a good question. I think the board does have the power, excuse me, to ask advisory bodies to give advice on any particular matter. They could do that on a very selective basis, which is obviously the case here, but we wanted to bring it before the Planning Board to make sure the board itself was comfortable with it. But, but I think the board does have that authority to, to ask advisory bodies to give advice on any particular matter.
Thanks.
Ms. Kim?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Just to kind of touch base on the, the district itself, it is not in the central historic district, although it's kind of a gray area, what is listed in the master plan. It identifies the central residential historic district, which is north of the existing central historic district. And even though it says residential, it doesn't necessarily specify that it's only residential. And the reason I say that is if we look at Prospect Avenue, what was listed in the master plan was club row. And obviously, within that list, they were not only the eating clubs, there were other properties within that site. So it is a gray area, but if the, the Planning Board requests HPC to review this as a courtesy, I think that that kind of dissolves any type of question of whether HPC has any authority to review it. So as far as the historic information on the property, on the library, I actually cannot tell you right now. I'd have to do some research on it. I didn't know that that was going to be a question. And I, and as Michael had said, it has had, live before, there was a surface parking area. There was a lot of utilities underground in which they had to do a lot of extensive work when they built the new library, which exists today. So of course, there was something historic there, whether it was a commercial building, whether it was residential, whether it was industrial, I couldn't tell you off the top of my head right now. Although the property that we're talking about, which is the Momo property, when the Witherspoon-Jackson historic district was being considered for a district, our consultant, Weiss Preservation, actually included that in their study. And it was actually recommended by them to include that within the Witherspoon-Jackson historic district because it had a connection to the, to the neighborhood there. They had a, I believe it was a salon. There was a use that was connected to their community. But when HPC was trying to determine the geographic limits for the district, they felt that they wanted to actually stop it at Paul Robeson because they felt that it was a, it was a better limit, and it was something that would have less friction for them to go forward as far as getting approval for this district.
Yeah, I want to say thank you to Elizabeth for mentioning that because I remember very well, it was actually quite precarious, the idea of nominating the Witherspoon-Jackson neighborhood. It was not a fully supported idea. It was actually quite controversial. And there was some concern that it would not be passed. And one of the ways that we could get consensus was by, you know, limiting the, the proposed district. So it, it was just part of that discussion.
Right. And also, there were other properties that actually went on Spring, Spring Street that was also included as part of that Witherspoon-Jackson historic district study. But again, because of the geographic limits and how we felt it was going to be the best option as far as getting that district nominated, they decided not to include those properties.
Right. And the Packet Building were excluded.
Right. And some properties that were right on Bayard as well.
Okay, that, that's helpful to know. Mr. Quinn, and then Mr. Bodigheimer?
Thank you. I, I actually can with some confidence answer the question from my friend, Mr. Bodigheimer, about what was on the library site prior to the Princeton Public Library. And I think the narrative has been correct thus far. It was a surface parking lot prior to the library being built, the Thaddeus Longstress Library that was built in 1966. And at, during the, during colonial days, it was the site of the Wiggins House, which was ransacked by the British as they were retreating from the Battle of Princeton. But that house did not survive into the 20th century. What was there was a coal gasification plant owned by the Princeton Gas Company. You might have heard reference to it in the applications that we heard recently for the Tulane Street properties. That caused a great deal of contamination that was not cleaned up prior to the surface lot going in, but was cleaned up prior to the library going in. So it's, if you look back at the oldest maps available at the public library, there is no structure on there in the early, early 20th century and in the, in the late 19th century, other than this coal gasification plant.
Thank you for that. Mr. Bodigheimer?
That is terrific. Thank you. That's super interesting. Thank you, Tim. I, you know, there, there's sort of two directions you could go within, you know, potential implication with the question that I asked, you know, one is like, you know, yeah, we raised historic, you know, assets in the past, and we should avoid doing that again. My, you know, the, the implication that I guess I sort of intended was we have converted something that, you know, is a replacement of historic buildings on a site to meet contemporary needs in a way that we're extremely happy about in Princeton today. And I just, I, you know, the thing that I worry about, I mean, obviously, it's important to get more information about, you know, the, 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 the history of buildings like the Momo Building, but you know, I'm very concerned that when we get an opinion, if the, you know, we're inviting and, you know, maybe waking a conversation in a way that takes weight off of the meeting of contemporary needs. And I, I would just emphasize that without knowing, you know, real details about what was proposed, this is the kind of place in town that is perfectly appropriate for intensification of use. It would help activate the street. It would help bring business and residents to support our businesses. I mean, it's just the right kind of place for that. And I'm just worried that if that's what we think, and then we ask for an opinion that, you know, might say, oh, you know, be, result in a detailing of historic qualities and attributes, that that might just start the conversation off about this on a kind of a negative and oppositional posture, when we should really be thinking about this as a conversion that's an opportunity for us to, to, to activate and make the town more economically vibrant and strong. So I'm just, obviously, it's, you know, you can't, you can't, it's very hard to say, no, we don't want to refer this to somebody else for, for their advice. But at the same time, I'm just saying, I'm a little bit concerned about it, about how we start the conversation. That's, that's really, that's really why I wanted to go with the comments.
Yeah, I, I hear you. And that, and I, I, we are asking for an advisory review. And and it will set up, I think, if we do choose to ask for that review, the applicant will need to address, you know, the, the historical points and issues made in that review. And yes, it's a, it's a balancing act sometimes. Mr. Quinn?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I, as one of the officers who took part in that meeting, I, I think it's worth, I think it's worth mentioning part of the inspiration for this referral, where the, these were traditionally black-owned buildings that survived the demolition of an entire black neighborhood for the creation of a, of Palmer Square. And I think that we should, as a town, show greater sensitivity when we are able to save such historic structures. And I think that there's a middle ground between, as we've seen on, on the, with both the applications that I referred to previously, we've seen where, where builders have gone out of their way to preserve what were not to preserve what were not in historic districts, but which were deemed to be historically significant. I personally think if you've ever taken Shirley Satterfield's tour, which I I know that she doesn't do in person very often, that you that these that this building was significant to the to the black community, to black life in Princeton, as was the 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 Spring Street where the Frame Shop and Farrington's was was also significant. So I think I I think we, and again, just to repeat for my friend, Mr. Bodenheimer, we've seen examples in Princeton where people have realized that just because it's not in a historic district, doesn't mean that it's not historically significant and that it's not worth saving. And and I'm also one who believes that not everything is necessarily worth saving or can be saved. And I think that's what we're trying to get at with this asking HPC to sort of fill in the what we know from the narratives from people who who remember when it was, when they were black-owned businesses.
Yep. Mr. Bodenheimer?
Thank you. I wonder if there is any kind of guidance that we can that we can give, sort of contextualizing that of the of the kind of contextualization Tim was talking about. And I'm sorry, I I I should be referring to by the formal role on the on the board, but I don't know what it is.
It's okay, Mr. Bodenheimer. I'm the Vice Chair. You can refer to me as as.
My good friend and colleague, Mr. Vice Chair. When properly trained, I can do this too.
I'm sorry.
My question, my question was, ultimately, my question was, is it possible for us to give guidance and 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 in in some way, you know, ask for a range of options to preserve that history and that memory that, you know, that that allows for recognition without, you know, I listen, I'm worried about the 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 word that comes to mind is fetishizing the past. And fetishizing is 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 a strong word and it's a it's a triggering word. It could be, you know, it's an antagonizing word. It's not my intent to do it, but I mean, we overweight what memory to the exclusion of the needs of communities who exist today, I think, you know, we need to properly recognize memory. So what I'm asking is if we can ask for recommendations that run the gamut of options that range from preserving the building as it is now to replacing it and incorporating elements that are appropriately commemorative and recognizing, you know, recognizing of that of that past. And that's a different charge from a just a blanket, just like, hey, give us your advice. So that is my question to to you all, is is that an option for us to request a range of opinions?
The response to that, let me ask Elizabeth Kim and Julie Capazoli to talk a little bit about what what is the nature of the review, the advisory review that's done in this kind of situation where, which I know is unusual, where you're you're being asked by the board, you look at something that is not in a designated district, whether or not it's on the National Register or has some other known historic significance. Do you do you look at that any differently? Do you generally offer up specific recommendations? Or do you review and report on the history of the property itself and and, you know, not make specific recommendations? I I should know this from having read
Well, can I clarify a little bit? So Elizabeth always does amazing work, reports for every application, whether it's in a historic district or it's in a recommended historic district. And I would assume she'd do the same thing. So, you know, Elizabeth goes through the history of the property various components of what's proposed. And then we do have interordance criteria applicable to historic structures. So even though it's not in historic, in a historic district, we would use the same criteria. And then Elizabeth always gives comments and recommendations. And then we, as a board, go over those comments and recommendations and then discuss and, you know, weigh what's being proposed with what exists. And this is something we do time and time again. It's not unique.
Yes, okay, so it's it's the same regardless of whether it is a historical review where you have a formal jurisdiction or whether it is a review that you've been asked to make where you don't have that same jurisdiction.
Right. So we just, in those cases, we we put together a memo. And so instead of voting, we put a memo together that basically summarizes the conversation and gives an impression of of what various commission members had to say, and we don't always all agree.
All right, that that's really helpful. Thank you. Elizabeth?
Thank you, Madam Chair. So just to answer your question and to piggyback onto what Julie was saying. So if it's a courtesy review, the applicant is never required to fill out a store preservation application or the fees associated, although the commission still follows the same guidelines for when they review any type of application, whether it's a designated district, a recommended district, or one that they're asked to look at by another board or entity within Princeton. But with that said, you know, again, I feel like this this central residential district is a gray area. And I guess I would push the envelopes to say it is within a recommended district. But it gives greater credence when the planning board is asking us to look at it, just in case it's not. HPC reviews a lot of applications and and Mr. Cohen will will you know, can testify to that, that we've looked at a lot of applications where it's not only the preservation of the structure itself, but it's preserving or making minor modifications to that and adding additions on to it. So they're not really trying to preserve the building in time. They understand that properties and lifestyles and economics evolve. So they would be, I'm sure, happy to see the existing structure, the streetscape, preserved with an addition on that or on top. I'm not actually sure how much the property has behind what I can see from the streetscape. But it's not that they just want to preserve it, but they would like to preserve as much as the historic character. I mean, you think about it, I believe that elements probably had a historic structure before it was it was torn down and a new building put there. So there was a historic streetscape that came all the way down from Nassau Street to Paul Robeson. So slowly, it's been kind of deteriorating. So I think that what the commission doesn't want to see is that Princeton lose that great history and architecture that so many people come in to as far as, you know, visitors and history and, you know, just coming into town. That's what attracts people. But if you lose those elements, I think that you're losing part of Princeton. And to Mr. Nottingham's comment that, you know, that you want to retain the viability, you know, I believe that the Momo buildings are very viable right now. You know, I mean, like, they're probably one of the most successful businesses that's been there a very long time on Witherspoon Street. So we don't want them to leave. I mean, HPC wants to be able to work with all the businesses and make them successful and have a good marriage between the two.
I just wanted to jump in and add to something that Elizabeth said, she said about the streetscape from Nassau to Paul Robeson. Actually, Paul Robeson was a later street, as you all know. And the actual existing stub of Jackson, which is in the name of the Witherspoon Jackson Historic District, is a little piece, there's a little park that's adjacent to this building right on the corner, which is also actually municipal land because it's the remnant of Old Jackson Street. So that's kind of interesting.
Okay, well, so if I guess it would be good to entertain a motion if someone would like to make it one way or the other about referring, although I guess it's not crucial that we vote on it. I just think since we've had so much conversation, it seems like a good idea to vote on it. Julie, I saw you leaning forward.
Well, maybe I shouldn't, because I'm involved with it, so maybe I shouldn't be proposing that I, yeah.
Fair enough. Mr. Cohen?
Yeah, I I mean, I I kind of like the way that Nat characterized it, where I I would like to have HPC take a look at it, but with a supportive eye towards helping the applicant see possible alternatives that they may not have considered to, you know, modify the existing structure rather than eliminating it altogether to to suit their their programmatic needs. So I don't know if that's too wordy or, but I I think that's you know, I I really want it to be a collaborative conversation with the applicant, not trying to browbeat them into doing something that, you know, is really antithetical to what they're trying to accomplish.
Understood. Mr. O'Donnell?
And I just I'd just like to to say, I would like to see HPC, on the other hand, do what they do and not give them any kind of restriction or, you know, I think that HPC has proven their value and their 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 ability to look at situations in a, you know, individual capacity and just let them do their job.
Thank you. Mr. Quinn?
Yeah, I was a little bit confused, David, by by Councilman Cohen's comments. I I don't, I envision this as being a report to the planning board, not a negotiation necessarily with property owner, correct? Am I am I wrong? I think those conversations, I think that those conversations have happened at the professional level, as Mr. Laplace mentioned, both here and at the officers' meeting and that they're.
This is presented as a courtesy review. That's what I understood was being suggested. And a courtesy review is something that the applicant appears in and where there's give and take between HPC and the applicant. If we're talking about just having HPC prepare some kind of a report about their opinion of this property without talking to the applicant, that's not a courtesy review. And that's not what I was understanding was being suggested.
Well, I, again, the the agenda says advisory review, so I I think it's good to have this discussion about what, in fact, we're asking, whether it is a courtesy review with the applicant or whether it's, I I'm fine with with either. I was just confused because we didn't use the words courtesy review at to my knowledge, it wasn't, that wasn't the intent at the officers' meeting. I think it was an advisory opinion was was more.
The case.
But either either's fine with me. I I just think that we should know what we're voting on.
Yeah, I absolutely agree. And, you know, Julie's description of what usually happens in these instances aligned with what I saw over the four years that I was the liaison to HPC, what I saw as a courtesy review. If we're talking about not doing that, this is really sui generis in terms of, I I haven't seen HPC doing anything like this for any other property in town ever, if it's not that kind of courtesy review.
Fair enough. What what is sui generis? Does that mean outside of?
Without precedent.
Without precedent. Thank you. Mr. O'Donnell?
I just want to jump in. David has much more experience with dealing with HPC. And I wasn't suggesting that that HPC do their job in the vacuum without talking to the applicant. If that's the normal situation, then that's, you know, that's what I support. But I'm not, you know, I I was thinking the other way where I did not realize that the applicant was always, you know, was often, if not always, a part of the process. So therefore, you know, I think that we may actually be on the the same same wavelength here.
And I think it would be, I think it would be much more productive if you had the kind of dialogue that David was suggesting, where HPC might have some ideas, the applicant might, very good reason, suggested ideas A and B, something worth pursuing, C really doesn't make any sense and explain why, have some alternative suggestions with HPC might might like. So I I think the back and forth would be would be worthwhile.
Awesome. Mr. McGowan and then Ms. Kim? Alvin, you're on mute.
It seems somebody's seen something that suggests that there's there's application papers somewhere and that they've looked at, that they've looked at something, looked at a building, a structure or what or whatever, and have an idea already that what these, what the applicant wants to do is tear down the building. Does the applicant, has there been a discussion? Does the applicant know that there's a historical there's historical significance to 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 this building?
Mr. Laplace?
Has there been any, has there been any discussion with them? I mean, does he even know?
No, yes, we've we've met on several occasions and we went over the and we were kind of surprised that the proposal was to not keep any aspect of the existing structure. So we shared information that we had about the structure with the applicant and and asked them to consider, you know, if not preserving the building, incorporating aspects of it into the new development. And to date, that the applicant is not interested in doing that. They're moving forward with a completely new structure.
Ms. Capazoli?
Oh, I just had a question about, you know, we have, it's really mostly about Elizabeth's time and whether or not she should put a a report together like she usually does or if it's like a concept review where she doesn't really prepare a report, we just go into a discussion and then we come up with a memo. And I guess one is a concept review, one is a courtesy review. And I guess I'm I'm trying to figure out which one is better. And maybe it's, I don't know, Elizabeth, if you want to weigh in on that.
I mean, my understanding is that there is a full application submitted. Is that correct, Michael?
Oh, yes.
So.
And has it been deemed complete? It's?
No, I don't.
No, it's under review right now.
Okay.
It just, yeah. Madam Chair, could I?
Yes, please.
I'm sorry. So I just wanted to add on to what Jerry was talking about, that it's actually very productive when there is a dialogue that that occurs between HPC and the applicant. Because oftentimes, HPC will think, well, what about this? And then when the applicant explains why that won't work for them, they understand. So that dialogue is actually very important and it makes a much more productive memo where all the, you know, certain things have already been hashed out, that things that HPC thought they could. that the applicant could consider is absolutely not viable for them and other things that HPC recommends to the applicant. They'll put in their memo that the applicant is willing to consider those things. So I think that that dialogue actually is very important.
Okay, thank you. This is really helpful. Um, so I think, David, that you were starting, oh, sorry, Mr. Quinn?
Yeah, it's just a question of what's the, what's the board's responsibility if the applicant declines to do a courtesy review. It, it sounds as if they've resisted a discussion about the historic significance. Um, and again, mindful of Elizabeth's time and trying to get the best outcome for the, for the board who's, you know, we're ultimately going to have to, we're going to hear this application and vote on it. And it would be good if we were well-informed on all issues related to it. So, but that's a lot, but, um, if, if they decline to do a courtesy review, sh- should we still ask for a, a memo or a report from HPC? Uh, that would sort of inform the resolution that I think, uh, Councilman Cohen is about to make.
I mean, I, I would, I would hope that the applicant would agree to meet with HPC and, um, and all we can do is ask, ask HPC to do the courtesy review and ask the applicant to engage, uh, in good faith. And if they refuse, then ask, uh, HPC to opine on the history of the property and its significance um, within the neighborhood and the community. Architecture, I mean, not, that, that sounds very um, short of what they a- actually, a comment on, I realize that, but I guess I meant broadly speaking. Um, Ms. Kim? Oh, I'm sorry, David was up and then, uh, Elizabeth.
That was, I was just gonna say, I mean, I think that this should be scheduled for a review by HPC. The applicant may decline to attend the meeting, but HPC can still look at the design, have the same kind of discussion amongst themselves as they would have with the applicant. It will not be as productive, but that's really the proper way to proceed. Um, if we're review, if we're referring it to HPC for them to do, whether we call it an advisory or a courtesy review, I think it's the same thing either way. Um, they should, they should review it at one of their meetings.
They're looking at plans. They're not just looking at, yeah, yeah.
Hopefully, the applicant will attend.
Got it. Well, that sounded like a motion.
Thank you for clarifying that.
Yeah, that was.
And Eliz- Elizabeth has her hand up again.
Yes, uh, Elizabeth, Kim?
Um, I was going to say the exact same thing David said, that HPCs could still review it if the applicant declined to attend.
Yeah.
And, and worth noting that HPC meetings are noticed and are they open to the public? Would this, this sort of review be open to the public?
Yes, all HPC meetings are open to the public.
Thank you.
But, but the applicants don't do noticing to property owners within 200 feet unless it's demolition within a designated district.
Okay. So I'm, uh, Mr. O'Donnell? You're on mute.
Just, yeah, thank you. Just picking up on what, uh, Ms. Kim said, is the, does the, either of the historic districts at this property seems to be between, fall within that 200 feet uh, parameter? As far as anyone knows.
I'm sorry, I don't, I don't, I'm not sure I understand.
Okay, uh, the, you know, the noticing is to anyone within, you know, any other property owners within 200 feet? If those property owners are within historic, or any of those property owners within a historic district?
Oh, I guess probably the closest one would be, um, the, the Arts Council. I'm not sure if that's within 200 feet or not. But that, uh, I'm just thinking what's.
Yeah, I, I don't, I don't think Paul Robeson is, is, is that wide. I think it is within 200 feet.
But it's, it's not really germane, oh, and because notice is not required unless a property is actually in a designated district. This is not within a designated district. So I'm noticed, no noticing would be required.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, so I believe, um, well, I don't want to put words in your mouth, Mr. Cohen, but ha- have you made a motion to refer this, um, application for a courtesy review? Uh, um, consistent with prior practice to the Historic Preservation Commission?
I think that's a good summary of where I have ended up, yes.
I'll second what Councilman Cohen said.
Moved by Mr. Cohen, seconded by Mr. Quinn. Um, Carrie, would you call the roll, please?
Ms. Capazoli?
Yes.
Mr. Cohen?
Yes.
Mr. McGowan?
Yes.
Mr. O'Donnell?
Yes.
Mr. Quinn?
Yes.
Mr. Tex Arney?
Yes.
Mr. Taylor?
Um, Jack, you're on mute.
Right, yes.
But I thought I saw you say yes.
Mr. Bodigheimer?
Yep.
Mrs. Wells?
Yes. Thanks, everybody. That was a good conversation. Um, next on the agenda is the Master Plan Steering Committee. And I just want to report to the, to the board where we are. Um, I am in the process of pulling together a steering committee of 12 people to work with the consultant team and the planning office and the master plan subcommittee to provide input and direction for the master plan update. This is not news to anyone, but Tim and I have put our heads together and consulted with staff and a few other folks and extended invitations to Princeton residents and a business owner. And while it's not the steering committee's job to decide what the new master plan says, it is crucial that they understand and represent the shared values and differing viewpoints of Princeton and serve as advocates in the community for robust participation in the series of public forums that will be led by the consultant. So most of the people that we've contacted have accepted this invitation to serve and I'm waiting to hear back from just a few folks and hopefully we'll finish that process shortly, at which point I'll notify the whole board um, of the full steering committee membership, um, hoping very much that that committee can convene um, in the, in the first half of May. Um, meanwhile, Clark, Haden, Hens and its subcontractors are creating a draft detailed work plan to discuss with the steering committee and gathering a lot of information, including a survey of Princeton University students and faculty and staff before the summer break. So the master plan subcommittee got to look at those survey questions and gave some really good feedback. Um, so that's where we are right now. And, and if you have general questions, I'm, you know, happy to have a conversation. If you have specific questions about who we've reached out to, I would ask that you, um, ping me offline because I don't want to discuss names publicly until we have a complete list to share. Um, I just think that could be awkward and, um, and so that's where we are right now. Mr. Cohen?
Yeah, I have a general question, uh, about the composition of the steering committee, which is, did you try to, um, seek people who had expertise in the different elements, you know, of the master plan? In other words, we know there's a land use element, there's a circulation element, there's a, you know, open space, uh, natural resources element, green building and environmental sustainability. And were you looking for people on the steering committee who would sort of represent those different portfolios? Or did you take a different approach? And if you?
Would say, this, oh, I'm sorry. Well, sort of a mix. And then you can ask follow-up questions if I, if I don't answer in a way that's clear. Um, some folks on the committee are representing, um, for example, the mayor, I think, I think that it's, this is a matter of public, the, the mayor will be on the committee, the, the university has a representative, the school board has a representative. Um, the other people we've reached out to, we, we didn't reach out to because they are content experts per se. Um, although some of them are, are very knowledgeable and passionate about certain, uh, the, the, um, uh, topic areas of different elements, but there's not a utility expert or a planning expert. I mean, we have those in the consultant team, um, uh, or a, but for example, there are folks we've reached out to have a lot of expertise with housing, um, with, uh, sustainability and, um, that kind of thing. So I, I don't, uh, we weren't looking to check boxes, uh, when it came to topics. What we were looking to do was pull together a group that really does understand Princeton, look like Princeton. Um, and, um, when I say understand Princeton, I guess I'm referring back to the both the shared values and also the very diverse sets of perspectives that we have in town. Is that?
Yeah.
I would, I would add to, to what the chair said that, um, uh, in addition to the areas of interest, uh, that, of people we've reached out to, that, um, anticipating a question from you, Councilman, uh, bike ped is, is something that bicycle pedestrian interest was, was an area that we also, um, included. Mr. Lesko has his hand up, Madam Chair.
Justin?
Good evening. Uh, I'm happy I'm wearing a collar for this because normally I'm behind the. But, um, I, I just figured I would jump in as well. Um, you know, definitely to reiterate everything the chair said, but also we will have room for the experts. Um, in our schedule, the consultants have already pointed out that, you know, let's say the open space and recreation element, we're heavily going to involve the, both the open space manager, uh, that works for the municipality as well as the recreation board, you know, historic preservation element, of course, we'll, we'll reach out to the Historic Preservation Commission, um, and also Ms. Kim. So there's room for experts and there's also room for, uh, you know, as, uh, the chair said, people that represent the full community, um, and their experience really overlaps multiple of the elements.
Yeah. Uh, Mr. Taylor, Jack? You are on mute.
Good heavens. This is, this is, this is not my evening, is it? I keep clicking what I think is the right button.
Happens to the best of us.
One, one of the organizations that, that seems to me to be a logical participant in some way, shape or form is the Chamber of Commerce. That would normally be an organization that would be representative broadly speaking of the business community as well as having extremely deep resources available to be helpful. Have we talked with the chamber? In any way is the chamber involved? Would it be worthwhile to talk with the chamber?
Uh, I have not. Michael, go ahead.
Yeah, I was gonna say, we have planned on reaching out to the chamber and also the Princeton Merchants Association as well as our new special improvement district, which has just been set up. They'll be the main economic development entities that really need to be part of the master plan because we're going to have a economic development element of the master plan. So, um, yes, we've been given that some serious thought.
Yeah, and, and I mean, apropos of what Mr. Lesko, what Justin Lesko was saying, um, uh, you know, there are, i- it's going to be important, um, to hear voices with, you know, very high degree of expertise on, on economic development as well as these other um, uh, topic areas. At least one member of the steering committee will be active with the merchants association. Um, but I haven't reached out to the merchants association to say, who's your person? Um, that is, that's not a strategy that, uh, that I've used. Mr. Cohen?
Yeah, I, I just wanted to make Jack aware, it's my understanding that incorporated in the RFP, the request for proposal from the consultants, it was made clear that there's to be a new economic development element of the master plan. That's actually being created anew. We have not had one in the past. So it's the, you know, the business community and economic development is very, very much a focus. Love this effort. Um, yeah.
Good, well taken.
Yeah. Okay, so I hope to be able to, um, you know, give everybody's specific information and, uh, um, you know, within a week, um, hoping very much to chase a few folks down in the next couple of days. And then we'll, um, move this thing along. Um, Mr. Mr. Quinn, you're on mute. I know you're.
Madam Chair, I think Mr. Taylor had another question.
Oh, I'm sorry. Excuse me. Jack?
Uh, just a, just a simple question. It, it may be unique to me, but I'm not completely clear about the nature of accountabilities. I mean, I see the participants involved. We have the planning board, we have a master plan committee, we have a steering committee, we have a town council. And in terms of how the organization of the plan and the ultimate review and approval process is concerned, I'm not crystal clear about who's in charge of what, what the sequencing of accountabilities is. It might be useful to make that clear for the record.
Um, thank you for the invitation. The, the, um, the, the planning board, um, is the body, the, the, the master plan is a product of, a work product of the planning board. The planning board adopts it. Um, it is not a, a council document, although with two members of the, um, uh, council on planning board, there's certainly, um, cross pollination there. And it's in, very important to hear, uh, what council members, uh, think and feel about it, but um, the steering committee will oversee, um, well, the, the master plan committee will be ex officio members of the steering committee. So they'll be involved at every step of the way. The steering committee will, um, approve work plans and oversee the work of the consultants. The master plan itself is a community document, um, and is, uh, and so it's not any of our jobs to decide what it says. It's very important that we make sure that it addresses, um, crucially important issues in town, um, but it is the community's, um, it, it, it is truly a community um, document. I, 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 I hope that that's um, helpful. And, but, but, you know, to a point, actually, Mr. Bodigheimer raised really good questions the last time we talked about this, about what, you know, at what point along the way does the planning board see how things are going, the full plant board? Um, and, and that will happen, um, Justin can describe what he has in mind, um, but on a, almost every. But on almost every time we meet, if not every time, there will be a report to the board on progress and a teeing up and preview of what's coming up next in the way of meetings and how elements are coming together. There are some elements, including the utility element, that not only will be the subject of public meetings, but into which specific work, contracted work products need to be completed and, and integrated in. I'm thinking specifically of stormwater related things, but there may be others as well. So, there would, there will be a lot of moving parts. The planning board will be kept informed at every, every step of the way. And at the end of the day, it will be the planning board that adopts this, this new plan. Less, Justin Lesko, did you have anything else to add to that?
Yeah, I was just going to jump in and say, you know, to the point about accountability. Like the chair said, it's a planning board document. There will be three public hearings at the end of the process devoted to adopting it. In addition to those ongoing, you know, every planning board meeting, a staff member will say, coming up, we have an open house, please attend. The steering committee meetings will be monthly and they'll be open to everyone, including yourselves as, as residents of the town or as the ex officio members. So, this is going to be, you know, to the point where it might seem like almost too much. And you might be saying, give me a break, you know. I'm, I'm, I'll go to open house one, but not open house two. So, it really is like a monumental time for our community to do this because the last time we really had a full revamp was in 1996. I can't speak to that one as I lived 40 miles away and was three years old. But, you know, this is kind of new to everyone, the total revamp. And we're doing it in a way that we get all those voices where those groups that you mentioned will be working hand in glove together to, you know, make sure that document that you vote on at the end. Because ultimately, like the chair said, it's, it's your vote to approve it. It's something that you're comfortable with and confident in.
Zenon?
So, I'm, yeah, I'm just curious, like, I guess for members of the planning board that are not part of the master plan subcommittee, I guess they're welcome to attend, from what I understand. But I guess what level involvement is possible? I mean, I, I guess we're not allowed to vote on any decisions, but, you know, we can participate in conversations if we want to.
Well, absolutely, participate in conversation. And as the different elements of the plan, which you, which you might have a particular interest are, are being updated, you know, you can, you know, participate in intensively in commenting and, you know, making your opinion clear, in providing, you know, materials that you want, you know, that you think should be part of what's considered.
And on top of that, in addition to the, the public meetings where, and the steering committee and everything, those meetings that you're, you know, certainly invited to attend, you know, just looking at the faces around, I, I know we're going to get input from the PBAC, from the HPC, from the Environmental Commission. You know, maybe we have a focus group at the library, whatever else. And, you know, those will also be opportunities for you to shape what goes into the document and then what comes out of it, or what it becomes, I should say.
And, and it's also important to respond to Zenon's question that board members will be voting on each of the elements. So, you'll, you'll have a final comment and discussion of, you know, and be able to vote and ask for changes and, and that sort of thing. So, several steps along the way.
Mr. Taylor?
Sorry, I had a quick follow-up. Do we have a timeline set for the, the planning process? So, or like, when, or how long is it expected to, to go?
It's expected to play out over about 14 months.
14 months, okay.
Mr. Quinn had his hand raised and then Mr. Taylor.
Yeah.
Thank you. I just wanted to point out for my colleagues that there are no quorum concerns. My understanding is for board members attending master plan committee meetings. I attended several before I was a member of the master plan committee, subcommittee. Last year, I think Councilman Cohen, we attended as members of the public, along with other members of the public. So, Jerry, if you could just, if you could just reinforce that there aren't any quorum concerns with planning board members attending committee, committee meeting, such as the master plan subcommittee. Or if you'd like to join members of the landscape subcommittee next Friday at their meeting, I'm sure that you'd be able to.
Sure. Jerry, you're on mute.
There are no quorum concerns. Those who are not members of the committee obviously can't vote. And they really are participating in, in effect is, as members of the public. But the quorum goes just to the members, relates just to the members of the committee.
Mr. McGowan? And then Mr. Taylor?
Very quickly, I think you answered, you said, no quorum concern. So, there's not going to be a worry of, say, all, all the planning board members decide to go, go to one of the meetings? There's not, there's not going to be a notice concern or anything like that?
Well, the meetings will be no.
There's no.
Good, good.
There's no, there's no quorum concern because all of the meetings are publicly noticed.
Okay, that's what I thought you were saying, but just want to make sure.
Yeah, yep. Jack?
Yeah, just a comment from out of my, my background. Having been involved in, in these kinds of challenges, cross-country, cross-city, cross-department, multiple times, and Achilles' heel, and sometimes the most important Achilles' heel of the process I've experienced and have the scars to prove it, is how effectively and efficiently the process itself is managed. You have a wide range of participants with multiple motivations. And how, how to manage that is important. My question therefore is, is it crystal clear that the consultant reports to the planning department of the municipality of Princeton, number one? And number two, do we likewise have available an information, software information management process that allows us efficiently to keep in touch with what's going on, where, when, with whom and how? These have been two critical elements in my experience of problems as they've occurred, usually regularly, but it certainly makes the 13th and 14th month unpleasant when these problems.
Yes, point taken. So, I'll let Justin jump in because I know he's worked care, you know, intensively with the consultants and, and, and I believe that they've discussed this kind of thing. And if I want to add anything after he, it's because he is the point person in the planning office for this. Go ahead, Justin.
Yes, thank you, Chair. Yes, they work for us, definitely, period. And since we've signed, got everything finalized about a month, month and a half ago, they, they've already been working for us. So, this leads into your second question, which we're going to have an online resource that hasn't been developed yet. But, you know, you'll see QR codes around, you'll see flyers around, but the online resource will also, you know, tell people when the meetings are, might have a survey on it itself, you know, other creative ways that we could get people involved, both in-person at a, at a set time, on Zoom at a set time, or through another, you know, way that they could provide input for people that might not be able to get to a seven o'clock meeting or, or a 12 noon meeting.
Good.
And I would just add to that, that I, I have seen a very large, with many columns and rows, Gantt chart. So, it, with, you know, beginning to lay out really this very detailed work plan. And one of the, really the first thing that the steering committee will do with the consultant team is go over that and kick the tires. Make sure everybody understands every part of it, to, to the extent that they want and need to. So, I think that that'll be helpful and will address some of what you're, you know, some, some of what you just.
Yep, and as you alluded to. Exactly. As you alluded to.
Yeah.
This works best when, you know, timelines are there, meetings are there, everything's transparent. And, and once we get the steering committee finalized, we'll have a kickoff meeting and those schedules will, you know, be out there, you know, queue from kickoff to finalization. And just to make sure everybody knows when to show up, where to show up, and, you know, how to get their input in.
Discipline with a smile, we call it.
And I think it's important to understand too, that the writing of a master plan, it's sort of done on a rolling basis. I mean, in a way, with the gathering of preliminary information, this document's already starting to be written. And it's going to keep evolving and be revised as input is gathered. So, it's sort of like the ball's already rolling and it's going to pick up momentum as we get into the, with the work plan.
And I've already sent them 30 years of documents to that point. So, as much as me saying, you know, I don't remember 1996, they're going to know about it, so.
And I, I just wanted to follow up on a comment that Louise said earlier about the fact that a meeting is, is an open public meeting really addresses the quorum problem, any, any quorum issues. Quorum issues are separate, really, is whether there is a majority of, of the members of the committee that are at the meeting and therefore constitute a quorum and the, and the meeting can proceed.
Got it. Okay. Another good discussion. Thank you, everybody. Any other thoughts? Okay. Tim Quinn, do you want to give us an update on the ad hoc committee on site plan review?
So, yes, I would. Thank you, Madam Chair. I have been unsuccessful in getting an architect to appeared before the former site plan committee to agree to meet with the, with the ad hoc committee. So, I'm going to be pulling the ad hoc committee to meet next week, hopefully, so that we can set a date for our public hearing into that we would get public feedback. Then, the committee would, would write a report with recommendations that would become ordinance. I, I think that, I, I hope that members of the board who have been interested in this have been following along with Mr. O'Donnell's detailed notes, which have served as minutes to these meetings. So, we are a little bit off schedule, but I think once the public, once we hold the public forum, I think we'll be able to make our recommendations and then turn it over to, to Jerry for the actual writing of the ordinances and referral to council.
Okay. Any questions for Tim?
So, I've seen three sets of minutes so far. Have I missed any?
So, we had an intro meeting, then we had the legal meeting, then the planning meeting, and then the engineer, the engineering. So, there should be four sets of, of notes or minutes. And there has been a time gap. Obviously, there's less than ideal that I'll take full responsibility for. But there should, we've met four times. So, I think there should be four sets of minutes that have either been delivered or it's possible that the last set, which was our meeting with, with Derek and with engineering, might still be in the pipeline. Mr. O'Donnell shaking his head.
They should be done now. I'll, I'll just go and double check to make sure that they were distributed properly.
Thank you, thank you for that.
Okay. Before we adjourn, I just want to note, our next meeting is a special meeting on May 3rd, which is a Tuesday, I think. And, and then we have a second meeting that same week. So, we, we had a night, we have a few weeks off recently, but we are sort of ramping up again. The May 3rd meeting, we'll be looking at the Turghuen Harrison redevelopment project. And so, you will, I think all of that, in, all of those background materials are already up on the website, but if they're not, they soon will be. And they're up, Michael says, okay, good. Okay. Mr. Cohen?
I moved to adjourn.
Is there a second?
Second.
I heard a second. All in favor, please say aye.
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 Thank you all very much. See you May 3rd, if, if not before, on Heinz Plaza. Good night.
Only a half hour later than anticipated.
Yeah.
By me.
Good night.
Good night.
Thank you.